All right. Thank you for joining us, everybody. This is the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, February 25th. My name's councillor Armin Herford, and as acting mayor, I'll be chairing this meeting. Welcome, as always, to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Can I have someone adopt a move by Jenna and our councillor Stoner? Second by councillor French. All those in favor? Wishing carries. So next up, our first order of business is lower mainland local government association motions. And I suppose we'd start, actually, I'd like to start with my own mind. I started working on the highway, sort of highway, general highway safety, and I went down many rabbit holes that all seemed to sort of petered out. So I couldn't find, I was having a hard time getting somewhere that really crystallized something that was broadly applicable, so I have to do some more work there. That might be a next year project, but I also see why, yeah, I can see why there's some work to do there. But I think, I was thinking for this, we could just, we could go around the table, because I think everyone has at least one that they're working on. And we'll start to my left, like, yes.
But I think for this piece around highway standards, we shouldn't lose it, and we should keep track of it for when we're planning our UBCM meetings next year. It's a good topic of conversation, and it might help us if we get a meeting with the minister in September to actually then figure out what that motion might look like going forward, once we have some clarity on about who sets those standards. So I just want, if staff could keep that on our discussion for UBCM, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councillor French.
So my resolution is on the legitimization of tiny homes. And I've had some great feedback from a lot of sources, district staff, outside people who have been working on diverse housing options, including tiny homes for a long time. And so this is the resolution that we're sitting at. I think this is draft number three. It was a lot longer earlier. And I think that is all I've got at this point. So if there's any feedback on the version that we have at this point, I'm certainly open to it. Although I think this is it. I think this could go as our submission. If anybody has other thoughts, I'd love to hear them.
Councillor Eadie.
Just a question, actually, and just, because I can't remember off the top of my head. Legislatively, what is the obstacle to tiny homes right now?
Legislatively, so there's building code issues. Most tiny homes have design elements that don't fit within the current building code. And probably the best example is ladders and steep staircases. The many designs incorporate ladders and steep staircases to get to upward reaches. And plain and simple, those do not fit the building code. And then there are other examples, but that one really captures the building code issue. And then there are also issues around zoning, yeah, zoning. There just, there is not language specific enough that would allow for this type of housing in most zoning definitions. And I'm kind of, I'm looking at staff. Does that capture that accurately? I don't see any no's.
Yeah, I agree. It's the building code that's the issue, the zoning.
Zoning we could work around?
I think with accessory drawing units, that's what they are. I think we fall under that category as well. So I don't see a zoning problem. It's the building code issue.
And I think the resolution is focused on the building code and doesn't, the resolution is about making changes to the building code. And while zoning is mentioned in the resolution, there's not a specific action request in the therefore that relates to zoning. The action request is around the BC building code, or building code.
Councillor Eadie.
I wondered whether it might be possible or convenient to attach a little bit of a background, or just with the, by way of a footnote, a reference, a link to the March 2017 CHBA presentation, if there is such a thing. Is it one single document that may be, that somebody may wish to refer to, and so to offer a link?
I'm not sure about that, but it's noted.
That has come up in my resolution, that I had a particular link I could attach. And I understand that background information is appropriate. So it's just an idea. My second one is on the second whereas, there's a reference to mobile homes. And I'm thinking back to the zoning by law review 10 years ago, where there was all kinds of clutter about terminology, mobile, modular, manufactured, that needed to be straightened out. My question is whether it might be appropriate to put after mobile in brackets manufactured, because I take it that most uses of manufactured home today are homes built on a chassis for transport on the highway, in other words, mobile homes. So mobile is a little bit looser terminology. You're getting into, all of them are, have some spectrum to them. But I'm just wondering whether manufactured could be put in there. And the association that produces mobile homes is the Manufactured Homes Association of BC, or Manufactured Homes, so, yeah.
So my preference would be to leave it. Okay. And specifically to have that loose and less defined. And I think what we're looking for here is looser as opposed to tighter.
So you're not concerned about whether it's on a chassis or not for the purposes of this?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
And one of the reasons is a popular possible form is former shipping containers.
I see.
Which are not on a chassis.
Right.
Would be put in place using a crane. And then if they are moved down the road, would be plucked off of whatever foundation they're on, using a crane, put onto a chassis, moved to another location, another crane into new location.
Thank you. Councillor Eadie.
Just a question, and I think we touched on it briefly last time, but this speaks to financial accessibility. But if you have mobility challenges and, you know, physical challenges, is there an assumption that this just isn't an appropriate housing form? Is this the place to try and address that? Do you have any thoughts about that?
I don't think this is the place to address it. In my mind, this isn't ideal housing forms for somebody who is, say, in a wheelchair. And in my mind, that should be obvious and evident. And it's certainly a concern of folks who come from the health side of things. And in speaking with Bob Deeks of RDC Fine Homes about the Canadian Home Builders Association efforts in this area previously, he indicated to me that the folks who advise on this stuff from the Health Ministry, this is their biggest pushback, is exactly this point of this housing is not ideal for people who have mobility issues.
Really?
Through the chair, I think that the tighter that resolutions are, the better. There's no reason that a home, a tiny home, couldn't be designed on one level. Often people go up because they want a bigger bed. So I don't think we need to contemplate that. The primary goal of this motion is to change the BC building code. How it then gets designed on the ground for different kinds of people who want to design their own tiny homes. All we're trying to do is enable the use to provide another form of housing. And so I think if we keep that as a primary goal, then this is actually quite a strong resolution. I think it's clear, follows the rules, and it has one goal. And I think that is key, is that resolutions that pursue one primary, like, don't try and put everything in there. Just focus on the key thing we want done, which is please change the building code to allow this use.
Councillor Eadie.
And I think taking that one step further, you know, if what we're trying to achieve here is accomplished, I see a potential design niche for somebody to specialize in exactly this. Okay, so you have mobility issues and you want to live in a tiny home. That's what I do, that's my specialty, and I can do it now because this has happened. And so I don't think we need to incorporate that level of detail into this resolution. I see it happening organically, grassroots, once this is received.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Okay, move on to...
Do we need a resolution?
Do we, yeah.
Yep. Can I just say something? Just from a technical perspective, there is a tweak that needs to happen. After part nine of the building code, there's a second sentence that comes in there, and the resolutions are only typically one sentence. They don't have two sentences to them. And I would recommend that you take out the words period, the code would, and just put in the word to, or, or, any alternative, that would define, to define or that would define, just to make it compliant.
So it's just one big long sentence?
Do you have any preference for either of those?
I would prefer to go with the word to.
Okay, thank you.
Next one. Yes.
I'll move that we send this resolution on tiny home legitimization to the LMLGA.
Second by councillor French. That's how we do that, everybody. All those, all those in favor? Wishing carries unanimously. Thank you, councillor French. Okay, we'll be on councillor Stoner. Which one's?
All right, so I am on...
So I realize now I'm going in a seated order, not the order that it was on the sheet, just to keep everyone on our terms.
We're on the second to last page. There are access to a dedicated motor fuel tax as a funding source for regional public transit. An effort to try and keep this as concise as possible. I've gone through a few iterations, but I have landed on whereas access to reliable public transit is critical to building affordable, healthy, connected, safe, ethical, and accessible communities. Taxation is within square brackets, is optional. This puts us over the technical limit of two whereas clauses. And whereas transportation is a leading source of greenhouse gas emissions, and investing in public transit will help achieve provincial emissions reduction targets set out by the Clean BC Plan. And whereas, and this is kind of the more detailed component, the South Coast British Columbia Transportation Service Region and the Victoria Regional Transit Service Area have access to a dedicated motor fuel tax, which allows them to share the costs of public regional transit among drivers, property taxpayers, and the province. But this dedicated motor fuel tax funding mechanism is not available to local governments outside of the two aforementioned areas. Therefore, be it resolved, the province of BC enable the implementation of a dedicated motor fuel tax as part of a cost sharing funding model for public regional transportation for all local governments, if requested by the local government.
Next one.
I would like to propose to council that we take a slightly different tact on this. Because we have met with a lot of resistance on the motor fuel tax, and also the BC Chamber of Commerce did not support a motor fuel tax for regional transit when it was taken forward by our chamber. So I think while we have support locally, there isn't a support by chambers across the province for this. And I was thinking last night about what we're trying to achieve. And one of the challenges that we've had around regional transit is that we're the first ones to sort of say, hey, province, there needs to be a different funding model for this. And the province said to us, be creative, which actually isn't technically our job when creative is property taxes. So I wondered if we actually follow the spirit of this resolution, but not focus it on motor fuel tax, but rather focus it on getting a funding model developed between the province and BC Transit that can be applied to regions in 2020 to be funded in 2021. So it would be fair and timely access to a provincial funding model for regional public transit. And whereas access to reliable public transit is critical to building affordable, healthy, connected, and carbon neutral, maybe that's where we work in the Clean BC part, and accessible communities. And whereas the South Coast Transportation Service Region and the Victoria Regional Transit Service Area have a funding model based on drivers paying, riders paying, so fares, and property taxes, and that this funding mechanism is not available to local governments outside of these two aforementioned areas. We don't say motor fuel tax anywhere, we just say drivers, fares, and property taxes. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of British Columbia and BC Transit work together with interested municipalities or regions across the province in 2020 to develop a sustainable funding model for regional transit for all local governments, if requested, that can be budgeted for in 2020. And I cannot repeat that. That was a one-shot, that was a one-shot deal, and you'll have to go back and listen.
I was, I was just hanging there, waiting for creative to be in the resolution itself.
Not putting the word creative in here. So I don't want to tip off people that are afraid of a motor fuel tax. But I also don't want us, as a region, to shoulder the burden of developing this creative funding model. And I feel like this supports the mandate of BC Transit and gives a nudge to the province that there are many of us that are looking for a sustainable funding model, while perhaps moving slightly off the motor fuel tax example. But it's implied, because in those two regions, we have drivers paying, riders paying, and property taxes paying. So that is what I'm going to put on the table and see what other people think.
Thank you. I won't make you repeat that. Councillor Stoner, this was your, this is your, your motion. Do you...
Yeah, I'm fine with moving in that direction. I think it's smart to do so, to move away from the motor fuel tax, because that is a risky proposition to put out there, especially if this goes to UBCM. Hence why I was like, the way the room on, if requested by the local government. There was, there was some thought there around we're risking potentially making this a little bit more controversial than it needs to be. So I appreciate that change in direction. My one hesitation is there are some examples of other jurisdictions, Fraser Valley Regional District, for example, who have either decided to shoulder that burden morally and/or have come up with a different funding model, or to shoulder that burden entirely. And so do we, do we risk just getting response back saying there are other municipalities out there that are doing this?
Through the chair, in my conversations with other leaders in various parts of the province, none of them would describe their models as sustainable. None of them would describe their models as connecting First Nations. And we may want to think about whether we include that in our motion. And none of them are sure how to extend the service to smaller, more dense, or less densely populated areas. So you sort of think Squamish-Vancouver, Whistler-Squamish, Whistler-Pepperton, but how do you get the Darcys? And then how do you get it up to Little Orkans? And then how do you get up to Burke? So like, there's, there's not a real model. And if you take BC bus north, that doesn't have a sustainable funding model. That is 100% funded by the province. And local governments would be very challenged to pay for that and also expand their local service area. So I know that is an argument that could go back, but it's also easy to show why the existing models are pieced together and not necessarily sustainable.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Eadie.
So just on the presumption that the, that one, the chamber has a significant influence on this topic, and I'm not sure if that's true or not, but also that their opposition is likely because they're afraid this is a tax and go to, you know, a government service and cut it private sector, if it would be useful to have some sort of language in a rewrite that sort of gave a nod to the potential that private operators might provide a portion of this, whatever the outcome was, as a way to gain their support.
Really?
Again, I would like to leave the resolution open to the province working with BC Transit to develop the funding model, rather than presupposing what that should be. And I think as soon as we start to presuppose what the model looks like, then we're probably going to be offside with some people. So in some respects, it's quite a pointed email, because we want to lobby on sort of the three pillars of a funding plan. We can do it this way without mentioning motor fuel tax. And then we leave it open to, I mean, BC Transit's model is the contract to private industry based on the 5347 funding split. And they hire contractors to deliver transit within our local areas. So I think all the options would be on the table. What I'm trying to press is a timeline and an urgency that just isn't there right now. And there's lots of us looking for solutions, not just CSAC order.
Thank you. Councillor Stoner, I see you, are you documenting this edit to get the wording done? Okay, I won't.
I'm trying.
Let her focus.
Yeah, we'll let you focus on that for, for a second. If it's all right with everyone, we will move on to councillor Anderson's, and councillor Stoner can work on her edit, and we'll move back. We do have a, just several ones where we have an hour allotted to this, and we're 25 minutes in, and we're kind of on pace. I think we can get there. Councillor Anderson.
Very good. I'll read it out. Practical measures for natural resource roads. I'm happy to be dropping natural, just practical measures for resource roads. Whereas the changing role of natural resource roads for communities due to population growth, diversified commercial and recreational uses, and emerging issues, safety, search and rescue, evacuation planning, are not being adequately addressed by the current management framework. And whereas opportunity for stakeholders, including the local public and local government, to participate in collaborative road use planning and decision-making can be frustrated by lack of information exchange and confusing or inadequate protocols, classifications, and definitions. Therefore, be it resolved that the province be requested to implement certain immediate practical measures to facilitate integrated resource road use management and planning, including, as recommended in the 2010 report, to explore by policy the ways and means and criteria to distinguish resource road classes defined as high community or public use resource roads, along with flexible, result-oriented definitions for their maintenance, including deactivation. And to initiate through collaboration local platforms for information exchange and dialogue on road management matters between the public, commercial, and resource industry parties with an interest in resource roads. Now, the overall objective is to bring the province back to the table to discuss and bring back on to the provincial government agenda, resource roads. In my consultations, which are not at his center, because I would have liked to, although I did speak with a French George representative regarding forest safety, who was strongly in support of the emphasis on the safety language I've got in there. And I spoke briefly with Dave Southern and Scott Shaw McLaren of the local district, and a number of local foresters, in fact, province-wide foresters, and they're all saying, any attention to this issue is welcome, any attention. Now councillor Herford has referred to rabbit balls, there are many here. And in particular, there are two topics that are prominent, and that is funding, of course, but also deactivations. Just recently, a resource road has been deactivated at Whistler that local people are concerned about, commercial tourism operators, recreationalists generally. It's been deactivated, I believe, by BC Timber Sales. This points to the second topic that we did discuss last time, is who's going to pay? It's important to keep in mind that the whole problem is that the only people paying for resource roads today is the resource industries. So it would defeat our purpose to highlight that, that we don't, we want them to pay our share, because the whole point is, that's not the problem. The problem is they are paying their share and more. The other point that Mayor Elliott brought up is we need to be careful about offloading of costs, and we don't want to point to anybody in that direction. And that is very valid. However, the main issue is, the more, a more prominent issue in funding is how do we get, how do we compensate for tourism or recreation use? That's the big issue. And it's not going to be easy. So I've decided not to go down that rabbit hole at all and stick to issues that the province should be able to address immediately. And they are issues that were pointed to in the 2010 UBCM report. And it concerns organization and communication and dialogue and definitions. And this will mean that locally, our Mamco Forest Service Road isn't defined as being tourism-intensive. There's no definition for that. Our Ring Creek Forest Service Road, similar. It has no designation that it's the road to a provincial park. So this is what we need, new definitions. That will open up dialogue in future. I'll leave it at that, except to point out that the significance for Squamish is that most of our heavily trafficked resource roads are now going to be in the community forest. If they're not near the Squamish, it's Ring Creek and Mamco Forest Service Road. And I would particularly think we should be mindful of Ring Creek. We are going to have 100% jurisdiction under the offices of the community forest of Ring Creek. And that's going to be a cost burden. So we need some help, and that's the overall objective, is to bring the province back to the table and to the community service in our situation. Specifically, I have removed funding models from the language and all reference to funding models. And the background information is just to remind the lower mainland local government people and anyone else, that there is a particular report that is 100% valid today, and that's what we want to draw attention to. So that's the background information.
Thank you. Questions on this one?
I don't have any comments. I think there's a bit of formatting there, the number one and two, but that can be fixed when we submit it. But I think it's a strong resolution, and I'll look forward to the response at LMLGA. Not so relevant to major urban centers, but certainly the FBRD folks will have something to say about this as well.
Councillor Eadie.
On the matter of formatting, I've used an example of another, in fact, several. It's quite common that there is point one and point two.
We just missed this.
And this is cheating, in a way, but...
It fell off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not disagreeing, it just...
I've got another copy here, that's what I was looking at, sorry.
Okay. So I'll move that we submit this resolution.
Move by councillor French, second by councillor Stoner. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Councillor Stoner, are you ready for us yet? Or you want to continue around?
I'm trying to do three things at once.
No, no, you're, yeah. And we have time, we're, okay. Councillor Eadie.
So I had, thank you, I had a few resolutions, took a fair bit of feedback last time, and tried to rethink what I was trying to achieve at the end of the day, and so brought forward another group, and based them on some additional conversations I was having. So the first one is stepped municipal GHG emissions, right? So the first one is stepped municipal G H G emissions regulation. And I believe, I think it's still being determined if it will be supported, but Port Moody does have a, a proposal to add emissions to the step code. But I was thinking about more on the, a little more general in trying to find a way for municipalities to start dealing with local emissions in a way that would be comfortable for people. And, and I took the, the idea that the step code seemed to get support because it was performance-based. So it didn't mandate how people had to do things. It just sort of mandated the outcome. You had to reach a certain level of energy efficiency. And I've taken that approach to emissions in the same way. And it also outlines, it gives business that, hey, by 2040 or whatever the date is they set, this is where we are going. And so business does have certainty from that perspective. They know where things are headed. But it also then gives communities who want to be more or less aggressive to work within that sort of certainty to where their community is uncomfortable. So I wanted to propose that for emissions at the community level as a tool.
Go ahead, Marily.
Through the chair. I just had a couple of questions. So which legislation would you update? And can you give an example? Of what's missing? So I guess my confusion is, are there specific, is there a specific legislation that's getting in our way? And what are the specific tools you want us to be using that we're not?
So, for example, an energy heat system, you know, by 2050 must be zero emissions, a home energy heating system. And maybe there's steps to that. So it's, it's, you know, whatever the emissions units are, but eighty by twenty, thirty, and sixty by 2040. So it'd be home energy systems, home heating systems. I debated a bit about vehicles in terms of business, business fleets. So, so those sorts of things. I wasn't trying to be too restrictive at this point. But if, if I need to come up with a short list. Basically, I was looking at a bunch of resolutions that tried to deal with these as one-offs. And so then you just have like a mountain of, there's one for home heating and all of the exact same one for this other thing, and the exact same one for this other thing. And I wanted to just take a step back and try not to complicate. Have a bit more of a holistic solution was, I thought.
So which legislation?
I believe it would be the Local Government Act and/or the Community Charter.
Mr. McSilence is processing time.
I'm, I'm thinking. So one, this, it's not clear to me yet how this is different than the, the energy step code, which requires that all new homes are net zero ready by 2032. And as you said, people can figure out how they want to do that. And communities have adopted different levels. So in some respects, this sounds like, like that.
Yes.
But it sounds exactly like, I don't understand what you're trying to, to get at specifically and what needs to change. Because when you say update legislation, I want to know which act. So is it the B C Building Code? Is it the Local Government Act? Is it the Community Charter? And then what can't I do right now? So in some respects, it's a bit too big for me. Because I'm, I'm not sure what we're trying to fix with this.
Okay. So the, the step code deals with building, building energy. I'm looking at something that looks more at municipal or community emissions as opposed to building energy. So a lot of that will be building related, but it's not exclusively building related. And it's got an emissions focus rather than an energy focus. At a high level is the distinction. But it follows the same performance-based idea and stepping of the step code.
Move on to, I just, I think about it.
Counselor Stoner?
So from that perspective, so are you looking for something in terms of like a community emissions budget? Or is this specific to building?
No. So for example, it would, in my mind, it would give municipalities the ability to mandate that your home heating be zero emissions by, like, for everyone, it would have to be zero emissions by 2050, your home heating. But a municipality could more aggressively require your, your home heating emissions to be lower before 2050, in the same way we do with new buildings. But this isn't just about new buildings. This is about existing as well. So it, it's more tools. And it may be, you know, for businesses as well, it may be, you know, your operations, you know, emissions associated with your operations, those kinds of things. And, and I assume that the province, there will be certain areas where they're not willing to give that over to municipalities, but.
So through the chair, you're looking to be a bit, you're looking to be able to regulate greenhouse gas emissions?
At the municipal level, yeah. But I was trying to do it in a way that people found a bit more comfortable as opposed to just a wide open.
So with a further discussion on this one, I, I understand what you're getting at, but I didn't get that the first time that I read it, which means that I, it's my, my takeaway is that is something along the lines of a, a G H G step code that would actually do some of the work of laying out what those steps are. And these are the, these are, this is how it escalates to get to here. And it would help take some of the burden off the local governments in creating that, in creating that framework. Because we can choose, we could choose where and how fast you want to move through those, through those steps. Does that sort of summarize what we're trying to accomplish with this one?
I think so, yeah.
That all sounds good, but it wasn't what I read or what I took from, from this. I don't know how we, how we get, how we get this to be, to be that. So I'm looking to some, I think we're all looking for edits on this one. Counselor Anderson?
Does the resolution retain its coherence and intent if we were to remove the first be resolved clause? And I was stuck on what legislation, similar to, to Mayor Elliott, what, what specifically? So if we were just to go from the two whereas's down to the bottom, resolve that the province used? Because I take, I actually think this is a valid point. I'm not sure how the floor at the U B C M will, will kind of grab, grab to it. But I, I, I take it, what I take from this is that this is a framework that could be applied in other, other fields to encourage emissions reduction. And it's a flexible framework. But I wondered whether we even need that, that, that first enactment clause there. And just down, down to the last one, does it, is it still coherent? Does it still have any bite, if you like?
Counselor Penningill?
I, I think it could. I guess my intent was just to have the municipality's representation at the table when the details get worked out was, was why that first whereas was in there.
Ah, right. I was focusing on the legislation and wondered what in specific. So I wondered whether that clause could be introduced or that element could be introduced to the bottom one. That the province worked with the municipal, with the U B C M to promote the step performance approach of the B C Energy Step Code as a model.
I think that could work from my perspective. I don't, you know, comfortable everyone else is with that. Everyone just sit on that for now.
Process question on this one. Do we, our timeline on the, on these is, is this our last, is this our last go at this before it needs to be submitted?
March fifth. So technically, we have next Tuesday.
Sharpen anything up. Counselor Penningill, this is yours. Would you like to, us to attempt some wording on the fly or would you take away and bring it back? Next week, I'm sure we can find a few minutes and agenda to go through something that we've gone through a few times.
Yeah, I guess for, for the moment, and I take it there is, if we took Counselor Anderson's suggestion, scratched the first resolved and further, be it resolved that the province worked with the U B C M to use this step performance approach, blah, 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 blah. That general idea is that something worth considering at this point.
Really?
Maybe, but I'm still trying, I'm, if I, I think that the whereas clauses need to define the problem more clearly, which is, what can't we do that you want us to be able to do by legislative updates that empower me to do? So I guess when I'm reading the whereas clauses, I want to see something as, whereas communities today can't mandate the type of heating systems or blah, 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 or blah, blah, blah. Therefore, be it resolved that the province work with the U B C M Climate Change Committee. They do have a climate change committee, don't they, China? Yeah. To identify legislative updates and so on, and so on, and so on. Like somewhere in those whereas clauses, you have to tell me what the problem is you're trying to solve. Because if I'm Vancouver, I don't have a problem. I've got my own charter. I'm good to go. And for anyone else who hasn't thought about this, they may not understand where their hands are tied. So I think one of your whereas clauses has to create the pain in the system so that your therefore clause sounds more like a solution to a problem.
Okay. I've got a list of things.
Okay. I think that would be helpful.
So I'm reading that as we're going to creatively, creatively find time next week in our, during our regular to circle back to this one and perhaps there'll be, perhaps there'll be others. Was there, did you have another one?
Yep.
Which, all right, let's keep, I, I will take the opportunity to remind everyone, we have 15 minutes to get as far as we can here. So let's move on to the next one.
Okay. So the next one is property tax emissions incentives. Similar-ish idea, except the other, the one we just spoke about was about regulation. This one is about the ability to put a property tax bonus on, if, if there's a municipally established emissions criteria for buildings or properties. And if you fall below that, you fall into the lower bracket. So there's still all the residential business and so on, zonings. But if you're low emissions, it, it allows you to essentially reduce your, your mill rate effectively.
Really?
Have you spoken to our finance staff about how this would work?
Not yet, no.
I think that's something to consider. We still have to like meet all of our tax regs. So one, it'd be good to have a financial eye across this about how this would be implemented practically because we are limited by the tax classes that we have. So, and I wonder if this actually could be part of your pain in the one before. We don't have this ability, so that's maybe one of the pieces of legislation you could change. You could list this as one of the problems in the resolution we just discussed.
So I'm happy to do that confirmation. I, I specifically intend to offer this though, so it doesn't ask for more mill rates. It's, it's just a bonus within the existing mill rate system. And to my mind, it's sort of no different than how we calculate our taxes. It still has to be distributed amongst all the rate payers. And just how it gets proportioned is based on the mill rates, which may have this new bonus in it. So, but I can confirm that. And, and the reason I kept it separate is because it is really a tax-specific incentive as opposed to the prior resolution. It's, it's a regulation, you, thou shalt meet this standard or else kind of thing.
I, I agree with, with Marily. This feels like a tool in the toolbox or in the framework that we're asking for above in the, in the resolution we just discussed. As one of the levers that could be used to achieve, to achieve those goals. So I.
And just the reason I split them up is looking at prior resolution. It did seem that resolutions about taxation and regulation were generally separated. They were seen as kind of very different things. I didn't want to put those into the same, for that reason.
That's fair. So to, Counselor Stoner?
And then second, therefore be it resolved clause, the G H G emissions criteria, would those be set individually by municipality or are you asking the province to set those?
Municipals, municipally established criteria. I can try and reword that to make it clear, but the intent is that this again is trying to deal with the circumstance where certain communities don't seem as prepared to act as quickly in climate change. So trying to provide that local flexibility. And hopefully get sufficient support with that flexibility.
You okay there, Counselor Stoner, for a minute? I have Counselor Anderson next.
My concern is that this is an evolving field right now, a lot of activity, including here in Squamish, where we'll have a draft climate action plan before the public, before too long. And that it's going to continue to evolve and including how we measure, what we're measuring, and the incentives that we are deploying. And they are, they're varied or could be varied, and they're going to evolve. So I'm, I'm concerned that this is, it may not be a useful time to be so precise about specific approaches when we are in, there's a great deal of activity underway just now, going in different directions. And, and that activity and outcome, and what we're looking to do now is going to evolve as we can see elsewhere as we do our second generation climate action plan. I'm hesitant about this one.
I'll go to Counselor Penningill to find.
Yeah, so just, you know, again, part of, and we spoke about it last week, I think, maybe not. But in the back of my mind is, is sometimes these get passed along, L G A, U B C M, and then they sit there for a long time before the province does anything, if ever. So I, I think, you know, we have less than 10 years to start having really significant reductions. I want to start having those conversations, have those ideas out in the public, get people thinking about these, get people talking about them. So, you know, for me, the fact that we don't have certainty on our climate emissions plan isn't a reason to not ask for tools that we could use. We don't have to use them, even if the province does allow this. This isn't forcing any municipality to do anything. It's just empowering us to do so if we wish to. And I think setting that tone, that, that desire for action, sending that general message to the province is, is important, I think. And if we get an additional tool we could use that makes sense besides, that's, that's great.
Personally, this one, I, I understand it being a tool. I'm, I'm, I wouldn't be endorsing it now without our finance chiming in on this at the, at the bare minimum to make sure that we're asking for something that's going to be for the greater, for the greater good. And I do appreciate separating it from the, sort of the taxation piece, from the regulation piece. And I, I'm coming around on that, but I, that's where I stand. But I'm curious to hear others on this one. Mayor Elliott?
So, one of the areas that I've been curious about is whether we can require G H G emissions reporting through business licensing. And then I wonder, rather than going after the tax side of this first, is that we actually go after the piece of legislation that would enable us to, to require G H G emissions reporting with business licensing as a first step. Because right now, no one's required to report their G H G emissions. Because right now, no one's required to report their GHG emissions locally. Some big industrial folks do, but they report to the province where they pay their carbon tax on those emissions. But before we can actually tax people for doing a good job, we actually need people to establish their baseline and then start reducing their GHG emissions. And right now, we can't require that. So I wonder if we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. And actually, what tool we're missing is the requirement to have folks report.
Yes, Kelly.
So I guess the one that is an option, don't necessarily, there's possibly some overlap, but I see that as maybe an additional tool we could ask for. I think this is different in that it's not restricted to business. It is, it's an incentive as opposed to a, like more of a carrot than a stick. Because it's a bonus reward below the base rate. But it's also what I tried to work in here in terms of objective measurement. It, you know, it is really complicated to objectively measure GHG emissions from a building or whatever at this point. And so that may not be practical. So that's why it may be just simply, the criteria could be as simple as, do you have electric versus fossil fuel heat? And, and so it's the absence or presence of identified heating infrastructure, for example. So it tries to simplify, as we get started on this, the criteria. And, and we can become more, more refined in terms of actual gas emissions, measuring that in the future, then those technologies become more widely available.
I want you, everyone, sit on that for a sec. Counselor French?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Penningill in that the time to get moving on this is now, or as soon as possible. And then I also feel that this resolution needs a little bit more work, and maybe we should come back to it.
Anyone else want to chime in on that? Mary Elliot?
I, I think it does need more work. And I think it's the same feedback maybe for the one prior, which is, I'm not in disagreement that these, these things need to happen. But the whereas clauses need to clearly describe the problem. And the therefore be resolved has to clearly describe the solution. And I think the resolution is too vague and doesn't help municipalities or regional districts see what is the problem you're really talking about here? And what is specifically the way you want the province to solve it, or the feds, or whoever on, on our behalf? And I think for this one, like municipally established GHG emissions criteria is challenging because we even know the challenge of establishing our emissions in our own climate action plan, and we know there's things missing from them. And so it, I think this one's going to be hard for people to wrap their heads around. And I think intuitively, it sounds like the right direction to go. But unless people have the clarity about what's the real problem? And what are we, how are we specifically going to solve it? That they might be prone to sort of go, I don't know if I can support this because I don't really know what it means for me as a, as an elected official. So like, yes. But I think you got to check in with finance staff and then really think about defining that problem and, and what solution goes with it for this one. And maybe run it by the climate caucus group.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to assume we need resolutions for the ones that we're going to, we know we're going to submit today. We're just going to put over the ones that we're not comfortable supporting. We're not going to take a resolution on that. We're just going to have further work happen. Does that seem like the right procedural way to go?
Is this Tuesday or just?
And I suppose we'll have to allow some time next, on Tuesday for, for this discussion. So hopefully there's only a, a few of those. We've got about five minutes left. We've got one, is it just the one left? And plus them up?
Two more. We're talking stand down.
Let's, I'd like to, Counselor Stoner, are you ready on?
Yeah.
Let's go back to that one because we're most of the way through. I think we can get, we can get there.
So the first whereas clause remains as is with the exception of adding carbon neutral to the end. So accessible and carbon neutral communities. And then the second whereas clause gets amended to read, whereas, and Terry, I have this written down for you. So if you don't catch it, as I say, it'll come, pass it over. Whereas the South Coast Bridge Columbia Transportation Service Region, Vancouver area, and the Victoria Regional Transit Service Area, Victoria area, have access to a funding model that allows them to share the cost of public regional transit between drivers, fares, and taxpayers. But this funding mechanism is not available to local governments outside the two aforementioned areas. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of BC and BC Transit work together in 2020 to identify a three-way cost-share funding model, drivers, fares, taxpayers, for public regional transit that can be made, that can be made available to all local governments in time for the 2021 budget cycles.
Mary Elliot?
I think we have to add provincial funding in there.
Or have taxpayers.
Yeah. So that, something about the BC, the, the province of BC and BC Transit work out a model based on the current, building on the current cost-sharing model. So we are 5347. But also includes a, a mechanism for drivers, fare, payers, and then the taxpayer. I don't want to let the province off the hook. So right now, like in translating, they get no provincial operating funding. It's their 18 and a half cent tax, plus fares, plus homeowners. I'm not sure that that's specifically the model we want.
We're getting close, Terry?
Yeah, we're getting close.
Province of BC and BC Transit work together in 2020 to identify, no, build on the current cost-sharing model. And include, I don't have that language.
What's that?
A mechanism?
A mechanism?
For drivers.
But also include funding mechanism. No, I don't have it. Drivers, fare payers, and BC Transit.
Want to work on it for another minute?
Yeah.
Yep, we're getting closer.
Sorry.
That's good. We're almost there. Counselor Anderson?
I just wondered whether the biggest whereas clause might be more clear if it was stated. And whereas, although, then when you come down to but this, just say this dedicated. So although the South Coast and Victoria has this, this dedicated motor is not available. It's just another way of just of separating those two clauses of the paragraph. I don't know whether that may be more clear.
Counselor Stoner, I, I feel that we've got good, we're getting really close around, around the table. So I think this one will be a quick one to bring back next, next week. You can, I'm comfortable with that. So you can participate more fully in the, in the meeting. I'm sure we'll get there with, with the feedback so far. So we're, we're running over, but we haven't made it through the list yet. So I'll go to Mary Elliot.
Sorry, just to add another little bit of complexity. The SLRD is interested in seeing this resolution and wanted us to bring it with us tomorrow. As a matter of late business, in order to endorse it from the SLRD and the District of Squamish. So if there is a way to allow for a bit of a recess with the agenda and work on it a little bit more, I'd rather defer some of these to next week to enable that because I think it would be great for it to come from the region.
Okay, with this new piece of information, would, our next topics to take us to 2:45. So if we run this one, Ms. Arthur, do you think, do you think we have a way to shorten yours by five?
Ten? Or you can, there's a 15-minute recess scheduled from 2:45 to 3 o'clock, special stress at 3 o'clock. So you do have a little bit of a, depending on whether or not council, if the whole considers they need a break or not.
Okay, that's what we're working with, everybody. So let's move on to, Counselor Stoner, are you okay to?
And yes, I can. Short.
It's, it's got to come from somewhere, a combo of the two, of the break and then, but hopefully not the entirety of both. Okay, you're going to miss, Counselor Penningill, did you have, went through yours, did you have one?
I had two.
Two more, and the RCMP one.
Okay, let's move over to the RCMP one, and then we'll come back if there's, there's something. Thank you.
I still don't have a title for mine. Trying to think of something snappy, but it's probably going to be boring.
Title, title works right now.
So I had the opportunity to run this by a couple of mayors. One out in the Fraser Valley Regional District, the other up north in the northeast, to get a set of eyes on it, both from a regional growth tourism hotspot and an industrial community. And so they are supportive of this motion, but just asked me to add general wording around growth in regional electoral areas in general, not just because of tourism and industrial activity. And so you can see that added in the first whereas clause. Whereas many regions in British Columbia are experiencing population growth in addition to provincial promotion of industrial and tourist activity in rural, remote areas that do not have the necessary public safety infrastructure. The second whereas clause hasn't changed around the visitation in provincial parks. And whereas municipalities impacted by industrial or tourism hotspots outside their boundaries have experienced increased criminality and road safety issues with minor or no increases in provincial RCMP resources, resulting in municipal RCMP police, police resources becoming a backstop to address the pressures created by rural population growth, provincial tourism promotion, and industrial project approvals. Therefore, be it resolved that a funding model, develop a funding model whereby provincial RCMP resources increase and are allocated to regions across BC at a rate aligned with provincial tourism and/or industrial activity growth and rural population increases in that region. So what we're asking for is just a predictable funding model. So that's where we're at. Do we have a title attached to it? Provincial RCMP funding model.
Tourism and growth impacts on provincial RCMP resources.
Happy to have suggestions to clarify. I'm, I've broken the rules. I have three whereas clauses.
Counselor Penningill?
So in, in most of it, I'm, I'm supportive. My one concern, and it's sort of, I tried to address it in one of my resolutions, we haven't talked about it yet, is, you know, it's one thing for the province to have more policing resources for work camps, for tourism activity and, and events that happen because of, of tourism. But I think it's, it's a different thing where, in my opinion, the province hasn't done an adequate job in terms of reconciliation or some of its other, you know, I would consider forcing through projects that they just haven't built that public support or don't have the, haven't done the work necessary. And I am a little bit hesitant about something they may read as like, oh, well, just, you know, hire bigger police force to, to force these things through and deal with things that way. And I don't think that's the way we want to go. And so I don't know if there's a way to separate that out. Or maybe the other resolution I could put forward is sort of a balance to that. And the two together are kind of supportive. But for me, that would be a bit of a concern if this, the way it's written by itself.
Do you have any reply, do you want to take the feedback as a whole? Counselor French?
I have some thoughts on a title. Remote area policing funding or wild area policing funding? And I, I could support taking out the industry aspect and just focusing on, on tourism with this. I see them as two distinctly different issues. I'd love to hear from the mayor.
Really?
In speaking with my colleagues, what's happening is that we're all lobbying piecemeal to the province to get one or two extra officers. And this is happening up in the northeast where, you know, you go and you beg and beg for a few years, and then you get a few extra resources. And so in this one community, they've just been successful getting two more provincial police officers. And so there is a need, whether it's for industry or tourism. And that's why I sent it to these two very different mayors, and they were CC'd. So they knew who all was on the call or on the email. Because what, what we need is a predictable model so that we all don't have to waste our lobbying time asking for one-off officers, that we can focus on the growth of our municipal forces and knowing that we're not sort of this sort of behind closed door download. Because our officers that we find municipally are, are backing up what should be a provincial force in the rural areas and provincial campgrounds. And so I think that was why we wanted to keep them together is that it addressed more of the, the province. And is, and this is why I wanted to test it in two different regions than ours, to see if it resonated both. And both were sort of vehemently, yes, this, this is something I would like to see. So I don't necessarily think it confuses it to include them both because I think both are driving the issue. But we'll put down a feedback.
Can you follow up?
Just with hearing that, I totally support this.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
I actually agree that linking the two issues together is itself a statement and a prompt to the province that could be useful. As for a title, I've got two versions. They both have the same number of words, which is eight or nine. We're supposed to have only four. RCMP funding model and tourism and industrial project demands. Or tourism and industrial project demands on RCMP funding or funding model.
Perhaps we should vote on if the, on the as-yet unnamed motion put forward by Mayor Elliot and, and delegate the authority to name it? How's that? A move by Counselor French? Is that a second, or are you protesting this?
I have a title.
Oh, you have a title, okay, here we go.
Growth, tourism, and industrial pressures on provincial RCMP resources.
If I, I think that's excellent. But the, and the issue that we're speaking to is for pressure on municipal resources. So maybe we want to, your title, but municipal instead of provincial.
So growth, tourism, and industrial pressures on municipal RCMP. Resolving growth, tourism, and industrial pressures on municipal RCMP resources.
How many words? Yeah. It's a hashtag.
Or we could do resolving pressures on municipal RCMP resources. And then the resolution would describe that it's tourism, growth, and industrial.
Getting there.
Resolving municipal RCMP resource pressures.
Right.
I've moved it, we need a second.
We've moved, we've moved it, the now-named motion, but moved by Counselor French, second by Counselor Stoner. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Excellent, thank you.
Good work, everybody.
Sorry, one more.
Okay, we're back to, Counselor Stoner's motion. Okay, here we go.
Therefore, be it resolved that the province of BC and BC Transit work together in 2020 to extend the current municipal provincial cost-sharing model to include a three-way cost-share funding mechanism that includes drivers, fares, and provincial slash municipal taxes, and make this available to all local governments in time for the 2021 budget cycles. Get it off?
Perfect. Terry's requested that, that note after, but yes.
Thank you.
I like that. Any other feedback? Someone like to move that? Moved by Mayor Elliott, second by Counsel Anderson, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Can I make another motion?
Yes.
That the directors to the SLRD take this motion to the February meeting for, what do I want to say? Ah, yes, to get endorsement and support from the SLRD.
Second by Counsel French. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. So we see the outstanding ones, I think we're gonna have to cap this discussion because we're burning, we're burning through some time. So we've got some, Counsel Penagill is gonna do some refinement on, so he doesn't bring them back on. Do we have another one that was outstanding for?
There's just two.
Just the, just the two more? I think we're gonna cap this discussion, so we'll move on to the next subject. And then we will see how that goes and see if we can come back during, if we have time on the break and so on. But maybe we'll get there.
I'm also willing to give up a bit or delay the start of the special meeting, because we don't necessarily have to start until 3:30. So I, and to be able to provide Counsel Penagill with feedback, we want to see those resolutions come back. So we do have some wiggle room here, and I'm happy to.
I'm, I'm inclined to move on to our next subject, then come back, and we'll just sort of gauge how that goes and then what time we're dealing with there, just so that we don't end up, I feel this next topic is important, we'll make sure it doesn't get shuffled off to the side with this one. So let's do that. You get a PowerPoint to him, so?
Yeah, there's only six slots. They're just more prompts.
Prompts, so session prompt. Okay. Ms. Arthurz, I would you introduce the topic and take it away.
Thank you, Chair Herford. My name is Robin Arthurz, I'm the General Manager of Corporate Services for the District's FOMC, and I'm here today with Charlene Pollak, our Manager of Legislative Services, and Christina Moore, our Communications Manager. And we want to talk about, this is a little bit of moving forward or commitment to council to look at outdated policy and bring forward discussion on how to appropriately update some of our policies. And today it is regarding the use of title of Office of Mayor and Counselor, so your office title. So our current policy was put into place somewhere just after 2003 and the planned development for the Ocean Park. And it arose from, we had council members that were using their titles to sign documents and petitions and other forms of written matter collateral that was contrary to what had been endorsed by council as body. So at that time, it was necessary to put together a policy that outrun the appropriate use of your title. And, you know, I was looking at the Oaths of Office today too. And even in the oath of office, there was a reminder that it stated that council will faithfully perform the duties of their office and not allow any private interest to influence their conduct in public matters. So sometimes that might be, that influence would be using your title out in the public on a matter that is contrary to something that was the mind of the body. And so that's what, the policy that was attached is short and sweet, and it really doesn't contemplate today's modern world with social media. You know, this definitely does not mean that councillors don't have a mind or an opinion. As individuals, councillors have opinions. And councillors, as candidates, as individuals, were elected because of those opinions. But once you become a councillor, using your title of office to make representations that maybe is leading to members of the public thinking that you are speaking on behalf of the district gets confusing. And so as it was described in the memo, we're looking to have council have some discussion that will allow us to incorporate language that establishes some criteria around when council might endorse at the request of an individual. You know, I want to go to the, I've been requested to go to the X, Y, Z conference and to speak on this matter that is really important to our strategic plan. And I would like to appear there as a councillor and really push that thing forward, and council would have a vote potentially and decide yes or no. And then that way, that person can have the weight of their title behind them when appearing at that conference or on a blog or something like that. Podcast. So right now, the policy is completely silent on social media or non-sanctioned, non-municipal events. One thing that this doesn't apply to is if you were approached by the media after a council meeting, and you're asked why, you know, why did you vote the way you voted? And, you know, speaking to the media in that respect, that is not applicable here. And of course, you have the ability to, to say where your mind was at when you were voting on a matter in the council chamber. This does not apply. And neither would necessarily the communications policy if you're, if you're asked why you voted a certain way. So recommendations from us on this would be that to recommend rescinding the existing policy and incorporating language into the code of conduct as landed on today by council for appropriate use of your office title. Establish a standard for professional and respectful online communications. And the thing about online communications is it is really, really confusing for the public when they see you waning in on social media. And it requires thoughtful language to separate yourself and to make sure that people understand that you're responding as yourself. Everybody sees you, you are no longer a private individual, you're a public figure. And then also, we would like to establish the protocol for council members to attend forums as council members if they're speaking and have the endorsement of the body behind them. One other thing that's coming forward is an update to our social media policy. So this policy was implemented in 2012, right when it became the norm for local governments to start engaging via Facebook and, I guess, subsequent to that, Instagram, Twitter. And what it was meant to do is govern corporate staff behavior and communications. It's an outward communication tool, and it helps our communications department also monitor as a temperature gauge what, what the feel is. So we'll post something and then get a lot of commentary or feedback, and it helps us do an assessment on what next steps might be for certain issues. So it's an issues monitor. It really needs to be updated. You know, it's recognized as an importance, an important communication tool, and it helps us, you know, again, assess that and encourage dialogue. And then it, we also, it helps us to understand some of the risks related to some of the projects that we're doing or where we may be under-communicating. Because sometimes we'll find we'll post something, and the feedback that we get is that, oh my gosh, this thing that we've all known about for six months or something, the public is, is not as aware of because we haven't been communicating. So next steps, the step will incorporate feedback that we received today into, hopefully, council agrees that we incorporate it into the code of conduct as opposed to developing a whole new use of title of office policy. And then we will bring it back to a further meeting for approval. And as well, communications team will be in the next couple of months bringing forward an updated draft of the social media policy. But what we, I think, are hoping to with the social media policy is, are we on the right track with our utilization of social media and the philosophy right now that we don't govern through the social media policy individuals' use and councillors' use on social media? So I can turn it on, more questions or discussion points?
Counsel, questions? Counsel Anderson.
I noticed in going through the report to council, that sometimes I wanted to say, well, you know, let's not forget print media, and it is still with us. And to just, I wondered whether I saw places where I would have thought that it should still be included in that, in the, in what we're covering here.
Can I clarify? Do you mean use of your title, like if you were to write a letter to the editor and say, Counselor Anderson? Is that what you mean?
Some of the discussion I saw on social media, I thought equally relevant to print media, and it continued equal relevance to print media.
And that is our intent, is to, that it governs both, absolutely, 100%. So we wouldn't be taking away from what was intended for print media. It would be adding sort of some protocol language around not using, you know, weighing in on Facebook as Counselor Anderson, and then, you know, espousing an opinion that was contrary to that, or something that's never been discussed in council, that's the other thing, as a district's position. And that, that's sort of the issue.
Counsel Anderson, follow.
Quite often, on social media, and it's so easy for folks to do this, they will name us and ask for a response. And sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, generally we don't. And often, these are development projects, issues for the community. My question is, well, maybe it's not a question, but sometimes what I would, what I, it may not be a code of conduct issue, but it may be a good advice issue. And that it is perhaps something to be discussed. That is, we can prejudice ourselves and our future ability as individual councillors to exercise what we're here to do when that project comes before us. But in the meantime, so there, I guess there's a distinction between a code of conduct issue and good advice to a politician. And perhaps that this can be, we can point to examples to flesh this out a little bit.
So one thing to remember is, is this policy doesn't supersede in any way any legislated or legal requirement of council. So post-public hearing, you are not to enter a debate, you're not to get new information, you're not to, you know, make statements after post-public hearing. So of course, that would extend to a public forum where the development is being discussed. That's off the table. And, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's an email you receive or it's responding on a Facebook group. You're prohibited from receiving any new information post-public hearing. The debate, the debate on a, after the close of the public hearing happens here at the table for the third briefing. And the other thing that to remember too, is sometimes legally, there have been times where councillors have entered into debate or made comment on our social media, and we've been, people can't find it anymore, so we've been FOI'd for it. And so you have to be careful of that as well. Because the intent of our social media is outward communication to the public through our communications department. Although, you know, there have been times where councillors have corrected thoughts, misinformation.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott.
So it's often the case that politicians will have a personal account and then their political account. And I think this policy has to cover both. And one of the scenarios that I'm, I always grapple with is that prior to a decision, if you're trying to build support for your point of view, can you use either of those streams, whether your personal account or your, your political account, to draw up support and letters of support for your take on a particular issue? Once that decision is made, you have to speak for the body of council, like the debate's over. But can you use your title to say, hey, I'm voting on this issue, I'd love to hear from you, or send your thoughts to council if you think it should be X, Y, Z? You know, there's people that pursue that sort of, that angle.
There, if I may, I think it would be, in some instances, it may be where you're, again, doing a temperature check of your constituent. And I wish I could think of a good example right now, but there may be times where it may not be.
Why don't you use a concrete example like a bylaw amendment? Can council speak before, after, or during? Local government access?
Sorry, we, we can't, if, your comments don't get recorded on the, on anything from, from back there. So if you'd like to speak, we could have you at the, at the podium, or we could consider that. But you seem to be, but fair points, actually, but it's more of a procedural piece. Sorry, Ms. Arthurz.
So let's say, for example, we were gonna lease some land for a particular use. And then I disagreed with the lease of that land for that use. But it was gonna come before council as a decision. Can I use either of my accounts to rally supporters from my perspective?
Okay, so right now, so right now, there would be, under the law or any legislation, there would not be anything that would prohibit you. Here today in the council chamber, we're here to discuss developing language where you all agree on what appropriate use would be. So we have had situations where councillors have lobbied or petitioned their supporters on particular items prior to a vote being taken and a decision being made. Once that decision's made, you've all agreed that you, you may not agree with it necessarily, but that's the decision that was made by the body. but that's the decision that was made by the body. So, whatever it is we decide today as far as that part of it goes, we will write the language on the policy that everybody agrees on because it's not a, there may be some specifics under the legislation, but generally speaking, take gauging the opinion of your constituents, the people that voted for you, I think that's why they voted for you and respect you and whatever the case may be.
Do you have a follow-up?
No, I just think that that, that's important because we don't want to silence councilors for having an opinion. We don't make them feel afraid that they can't be out there talking. And I think the key distinction is, once it's gone to public hearing or once a decision has been made, your time online is done, except to say that, you know, sorry, I can't comment right now, we're between here and, and third reading and it's against the law for me to do so, right? Like, you don't have to do nothing, but you can't sort of weigh in and redirect people to staff. So I just want to make sure that whatever we write still gives people the freedom, whether through their personal accounts or their political accounts, to, to be vocal about issues that they care about. I think that's totally on. I think the one that is more difficult for me and that I grappled with as a counselor is getting invited to speak on panels or getting invited to events that I actually wouldn't be invited to unless I was a counselor, like, they wouldn't have just invited me because I was Karen Elliott's citizen. So like, no, I want you there because you're a counselor. And I think that is not so much tricky for the mayor because you're the official spokesperson and that gives you a little bit of more latitude, as long as you're speaking for the body of council, but it is confusing as a counselor to know when you can rock up and go, hi, I'm the counselor so-and-so versus, I just can't use my title and whether it's anyone on panel or coming to, I don't know, that one's harder for me.
And I think that's where you would want endorsement from the board. So, for example, if you were going to go to a, you, you have a really big interest in toy trains and toy trains have nothing to do with what council's strategic plan or priorities or any of the work that's being done here, you wouldn't necessarily be advertised on the brochure as Karen Elliott, Mayor of Squamish, you know, toy train aficionado. It's, there's, one thing has nothing to do with the other. Or, you know, maybe it's, council has said, we love toy trains, but you're totally opposed to toy, toy trains and, and council's been doing all this work and you're going to go speak against it. That might be upside. You know, it's, it's another thing, you know, then you've got your bio for the forum and in the bio it might say, Karen Elliott is Mayor of the District of Squamish and da-da-da-da-da-da. As part of your bio, but I don't want that advertising brochure, one thing has to do with the other.
Well, on that point, when you brought that one, when we sort of started treading into that portion of this, it was really interesting because often you can't control what the, what the invitee says despite whatever instructions you may, you may provide. And often conversations want, so I have endorsement to go to this place to speak on this subject, but then, you know, question from the floor is X, Y, Z, still there's, you know, we're not going to go back and get endorsement to comment on that and these conversations often start here and all of a sudden we're talking about something that's over here. So, I have a really hard time being, finding that, like how tight we can get that without, and still allowing some, a lot of room to maneuver because it's a dynamic situation. Yeah?
So, one thing that we've found has worked well in the past is when you're invited to something to speak, you tell them at the time you are speaking as an individual and not as a counselor. So we have done that upfront and Terry's not here right now, but she's had to follow up with people who are putting on conferences and having people speak at them just to ensure that they're not putting that on. And the other thing is if it's on the panel on the floor and somebody says, well, you're a counselor and you voted this way or you did this thing, you can always speak and say, you know, I am a counselor and yeah, I do think that I am here as an individual though to speak on the matter and I'm not here on behalf of the District of Squamish.
Right. Yeah, I, I've, I wouldn't say I have a standard response, but I've got a, varied responses that are kind of essentially the same thing, hey, this is my, this is my opinion, not the opinion, necessarily the opinion of council and go. But, and I was thinking about that in the header of a, say, a Twitter, you know, your Twitter bio or something like that, you know, the opinions here are, in, like, how far, like, how prescriptive do we need to be in this policy, do you think, so that there's still that freedom for councilors to engage with, with the community, hey, this is a development we're going to be talking about next week, what do you guys think, have you seen this, you know, like, just sort of that stuff as the starting point. Of course, conversation online seems even more random than in person and in person is quite random where it can go in all sorts of ways. So, are those sort of disclaimers enough? You know, like if you said, the opinions expressed on this page are of, you know, not necessarily of the district, but like, is that?
If you want to put that on there, I think we would love that.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's expressed here, not necessarily those of the District of Squamish, you know, that are not endorsed by, you know, for sure.
Unless I'm white, steed or something.
That's a, that's a real extreme, right? But that's why we're having the discussion is what, what's the comfortable spot? You know, there's, again, you know, it, the public see things that you do as official, official district business. And so to, it's almost the other way that, you know, you need to be clear.
Well, I don't see much difference between the, the personal account and the politician account because if you chime in even without a, does a title, people are assuming that. And that makes, that's the harder part, I think, where particularly on, on Facebook or something like this where it just comes in as your, your name is your, that's it. And then people will bring whatever they, they want to that, to that. So whether that's a disclaimer each comment, which doesn't seem very, very, very practical at all, so anyways, I'm, Counsel, ready?
So, the one thing that I struggle with the most, I think in this is, and I think it's the multicultural fair, so we went there and I believe in some years they've gotten community enhancement grants, you know, after the fact, we tend to talk about it around the table about what we did during the week and we speak about it in chambers and, you know, I was having in the back of my mind, well, what if someone sees me and asks me to speak, so I didn't think about, I just counsel beforehand and so I'm not, so I kind of don't mention anything and then at the end I run into someone like, oh, I wish I'd known you were here, would have introduced you and just at least I'd just say hello. And I think all people are asking or wanting is just to know that councils are out in the community paying attention and so on. I suspect that's maybe a bit deflating sometimes to hear that, you know, I'm not here on behalf of council, I'm just here on my own, like, like, there's got to be some sort of middle point and, and so maybe there's some fairly innocuous talking points we can have or just some sort of safe things we can sort of say. And I don't know exactly what that is, but.
Thank you. I was curious on this topic where the title, you are, you are Counselor Pettigale, you're not necessarily there on behalf of coun, of council, so, and, and it's, you're right, it is hard when to sort of, to navigate those and, and I've been put on the spot, oh, pass the microphone over to him, he's got something to say on this. Oh, I didn't, that's not why I came, okay, and then, you know, off, away we go and, and, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it is interesting, but, but you're still, we are still councilors as we go to these things, you know, we don't leave, you know, it's impossible to leave that, that bit from behind, but I think that the difference to me is, is sort of some of the stuff that Ms. Arthurs was bringing up with the, the sort of advertising as title or speaking on behalf of and it's, yeah, I don't know, but, man, how do we crystallize this? I'm having a hard time. Do you have, like, Counselor, Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I'm referring to number seven, communication in the current code of policy where it address, where it states that members must not engage with persons who are involved in legal proceedings against the District of Squamish. Sometimes I don't find out about legal proceedings except through the newspaper, that is, there, just recently, there was a case and I'm not sure of its status, but this does mean that councilors, we do need to be apprised of these, these situations because the instance that's being discussed in the news, in the newspaper just now or in the media involves a, an entity with which all of us had multiple dealings, so that, question firstly. So, I just, I noticed this here and I, this clause and I thought, well, this means that we do then need to do our best to be apprised of these circumstances because they can be varied and there can be any number at any given time of legal proceedings or legal disputes with the District of Squamish.
Would you like to look into that to help you?
Merrily.
So, one of the things that we hear in our, our orientation is you're never not your title, like, now that you're elected, you're always that person.
Perceived as that person.
You're perceived as that person, but then this policy sort of says, but you can't be that person all the time. So, I think that's the conflict for, for us is, is trying to clarify that balance between you're always your title, but you can't use it all the time. And so somehow this policy needs to reflect that nuance. So, if Chris is at an event or myself or anybody really, we're there because our community expects us to be there as the mayor or as councilors. So, you know, my natural state of being is to spend the weekends with my family, not necessarily at a lot of social events, but my job requires me to attend many of them and so I am there as the mayor. And I think my colleagues are recognized as being there as a counselor. So, if they want to go, Counselor Pettigale's here and you want to say a few words, you say a few words because that's the obligation of your office is to, to do that, not to go, actually, I don't have endorsement of my council, so, no. I mean, this is the nuance we have to capture, you're never not your title, so if someone says, here's the microphone, what you have to say though is the general comments and not hit the, the soapbox and be like, and by the way, there's this vote coming up and la, you know, or we had this vote, it's a terrible decision. Like, there's a way in which you have to make a non-political representation of your title. The other one is hosting events. So recently a counselor co-hosted an event using their title. Is that a good thing, a bad thing? I don't know. If it furthers a conversation we should have, it's probably a good thing, but what you're saying is that should come to council first.
Get the endorsement, then it's all, everybody's on the same page with it. And I think one of the real sticky points for this is, it's mostly about using your title in written form. So writing a letter to the premier about some issue that's near and dear to your heart and signing in Counselor so-and-so, that's a non-
Starter break.
And, and so it's, it's, you know, that's at the most extreme or signing a petition. And that, that, like I said, that was the precipitator for this was signing, so we had councilor signing petition, Counselor so-and-so, District of Squamish. Well, that is not the official District of Squamish stance, in fact, the substance of the petition, it was the opposite to what council thought and, of course, it got surfaced and, you know, you can sign that petition as, you know, an individual, but not, not as, as purporting it to be official district business. And I think that's what it kind of comes down to.
Which was pretty.
Well, just devil's advocate, sort of, I don't know that everyone would necessarily assume that you signed it. I mean, I think maybe the mayor's in a, in a bit of a different category, but, you know, some people would read a petition and say, hey, there's someone who's on council who agrees with us, but they wouldn't jump to the conclusion that's a council opinion necessarily.
It said Counselor X, Y, Z, District of Squamish. So, that is, that is someone out there purporting it to be an official district representation. That's how it's interpreted.
But, but I think, you know, in discussions and so on, especially prior to a vote, people see different councilors bringing different perspectives, different ideas. And so I, you know, I don't know that it is always the assumption that a counselor is, they are bringing their own perspective and their constituents' perspective sometimes and then in other contexts they're speaking on behalf of, you know, this is what happened and this is, and so there are those, like, I don't know that people always assume one of the other.
I don't have questions. Like, yeah, I've kind of said what I thought and I guess now council has to decide which way to go, but it is confusing for the public. If you, if council has decided on a certain avenue of action and one individual council goes out there and is, keep going with the petition thing, signs a petition that's contrary to that body's agreement, it's confusing for one thing, but council acts as a body, not as a bunch of seven, it's seven individuals. So seven individuals come to the meeting and discuss and debate and vote, seven individuals. But once that decision is made, it's owned by the body despite how any individual voted on it. That doesn't mean to say you change your opinion just because that or you change your perspective on the world because of that, but you don't go out and petition contrary on that particular topic anyway. That, that is just what is an agreed to behavior for governance, that, that's just the way that it is.
Follow?
Yeah, it sounds like though, and again, I don't have a particular position at this point, I'm just sort of exploring, but it sounds like there's a, a difference, or there might be a difference between if you sign a petition prior to a vote versus signing petition after a vote, and I take it that might be confusing for the public, but the way you described it, that does seem like it's maybe an important distinction because...
Again, we brought, the policy that was written, was written to discourage any unofficial use of the title of office or anything that wasn't endorsed by council. So what, you know, what you're saying is contrary to our existing policy. You do not use your title to further a personal interest unless that personal interest has been endorsed by council and that's what the policy says. So if we're here to debate, to discuss, is that still the way it should be?
Counselor, sorry.
I think that that helps clarify that last sentence of what I was going to say and I, I think I'm still very much supportive of that direction. To me, it goes back to the question of what is the purpose of using that title and is it to further, like, if you were just signing a petition, the rationale for using your counselor title would be because you're trying to use the weight of that office. And so if the weight of that office hasn't actually endorsed that specific position on that petition or whatever thing you're talking about, then it seems unfair to be using the weight of that office and the weight of the entity behind it, the District of Squamish, to further that. That's your personal opinion and you can move that forward. But it is, there is that fine balance in terms of just being able to recognize that at times you're in the community and you're, you have to speak on behalf of being elected representative and people want to know your opinion and all that, but, so it is a fine balance there, but I do, I'm still very much supportive of the current policy direction in terms of women who use our titles in writing.
Ms. Arthurs?
So, let me just remind you what the policy says because it's, it is clear, it says, individual members of council have no individual decision-making power and as such shall not express opinions in correspondence on behalf of council nor as an individual. And council members are not to use the title Counselor, Mayor when signing petitions or other documents as individual members of the community unless- or other documents as individual members of the community unless council as a whole has agreed that the council will support the subject of the petition or document being assigned." So, that sort of goes to what you were just saying. That could put some finer point on it.
Mary.
Um, I, I don't want to change the spirit of the policy. I just think it needs to have more nuance now that we have social media and now that councillors do get invited to speak. And we should have a fair and responsive way to, to deal with that. And I'm not sure that it's always a decision of all of council. So, you know, what if someone gets a last-minute conversation, you know, I've been invited to speak over the weekend at this thing, and it's Thursday and we don't have a council meeting until Tuesday. So is there latitude that the mayor can make a call sometimes? And I'd like to think yes, because I, I don't want to hamstring our responsive and engaged council to be out there in the community. But I think that we will, should always remind councillors about where the boundaries are in terms of speaking for yourself and speaking for councils. So, those are, those are my thoughts and I'm happy for it to become part of the code of conduct. I don't think it needs its own policy. And interested to see how the social media policy gets updated, but-
And just to provide us a specific example that comes to mind on this, Mary Elliot was, was asked to speak at a, at a conference earlier this, earlier this month. She couldn't make it as acting mayor. Councillor Everett, can you go do this thing? No problem, I go do, I go to it and I speak. And I handle that as I, as I, as I can, as far as my opinion versus district's policy and, and explain that usually as you shift, because often you shift between talking about those, talking about those things. And that is a, is a classic example of exactly that. So maybe there's some mayor, mayoral responsibility there? Or exception before acting mayor? Or, you know, like some, something definitely around that is to be considered.
And, and I think as staff who have to go away and write this policy now, I think we need a little bit more directed language or directed, as opposed to, right now it seems very wide open. And we would be trying to write something that reads the mind or the heart of council right now. And it would be a little bit better if there was a bit more concreteness to it so that we can develop the policy. So, you know, things, just like what you exactly just said, that in the absence of council meeting, that the mayor has the latitude to endorse attendance or to speak on behalf of. But for some of the other more aspirational or conceptual things that you've been discussing, for us to coalesce that, I've heard a few different things. And I think council needs to land on some agreement so that we can put the language together.
I'm going to go, I'll go back to, to Mary Elliot, just quickly, then I'll go to councillor.
Uh, I think Ms. Arthur's would be helpful if you could give us some specific examples that you want us to go through one by one and give you the specific feedback you want. Or else we're just going to keep talking generalities here?
For sure.
And if, if I could, that's where I was going as well, was more, I see a distinction between before, before a vote and after a vote. Because before, before a vote, we can talk about the concepts and these are the things where I'm at. And there's all these, you can cite policies, existing district endorsed policies versus, you know, you can have a very nuanced discussion, but after the vote, then where the nuance goes, or the whole responsibility changes to me. So maybe breaking it into this sort of like-
Okay, so, discussion? We can try and develop a clause around discussion in the community before and after. That, I think, is pretty easy. Some of the more specific things I've heard were about using the title of office in signing petitions. The, the language that we have?
So we need to do that more efficiently than we've just done?
Well, I see nodding, so-
Yeah, okay.
When the policy comes back to be voted on, we have the debate. Also, written, other forms of correspondence on non-sanctioned topics? So, council members are not to use their title when signing petitions or other documents. They have no individual decision-making power and shall not express opinions in correspondence on behalf of council?
To me, that's right, right? Like, no letters to the editor, no letters to ministers using your council title, no letters to other councils using your council title. Like, it's got to come as a resolution of council. It's, it's got to, the official correspondence is the body of council making that ask. So, no, to me, you can't, you know, use your title to wander up in the world and, you know, hey, dear minister so-and-so, what do you think of this great idea? If you don't have the endorsement of council to do that, that's not on.
Sorry, councillor French, sorry.
Yep, just very quickly, as a councillor who has walked this line and crossed it, I, I like your suggestion that there be, or I interpreted it this way, wording in something, somewhere, that has councillors clearly express in our social media accounts that the opinions are ours. And in fact, I'm taking that one step further. I'm going home tonight and I'm going to do that to all my accounts. Because I, I think there's great merit in that. And it's one step towards increased clarity on an issue where clarity is very difficult to achieve because of lack of understanding generally amongst some members of the community and perceptions.
Okay, councillor Pegg.
So, you know, again, I don't have an issue with the petition as written and not using letterhead and so on. I think where it gets interesting though is, just think about a verbal conversation before a vote, and how's that different from the petition or other situation? Like, are we saying implicitly that there is an obligation in every conversation to articulate that this, these are my personal thoughts that I'm about to? And so maybe that, because for me, we didn't have that. And so that's where I'm seeing a disconnect between, you know, the requirements around petitions and so on, but it's not around the verbal piece. So struggling with that difference.
I'm curious to get the group's opinion around emails. We've got a signature that says councillor, District of Squamish, all the rest, but we're obvious, we're often having a conversation with someone about all sorts of, all sorts of matters. And, and this is where that nuance comes in, because you're not necessarily stating every time. Or maybe that's what part of the disclaimer, the body can be longer than the body of the email by a lot to say, except for this or that or so. And is this policy meant to, meant to incorporate those communications as well?
If somebody is emailing you on your district email account, you're officially a councillor and your responsibility is to respond in accordance with the policy. You know, if somebody wants to just ask you your opinion as a councillor on, you know, what do you think of daffodils outside municipal hall, well, I'm sure you can give them a, a response. But if it's a, it's a matter that's coming before council or that, you know, you get those kinds of emails already and I think probably respond accurately right now.
Yeah.
Mary.
I, so at some point, common sense has to prevail. And I think the overarching order is you don't, there's one spokesperson for the district, that's the mayor. Prior to decisions, you know, it's not hard to write an email saying, I can't predict how my colleagues are going to vote on this, but here's my thoughts. Or if I look back on the decisions council already made about this, you know, there's generally been support for bike claims or community connectivity, but here are my thoughts, right? Like, there's absolutely a way, just using the English language, to express that you are expressing your individual opinion. And I think we all have to use that in all of our correspondence without it sounding like a disclaimer or rigid. I think it's just, it's how we express our thoughts in the context of being part of a body that hasn't made a decision yet. Afterwards, it sounds different. It's like, yep, council voted this way, I didn't vote with the majority and these are my reasons why, but we're moving forward under this decision and, and I'll support the will of council, right? So you can still give your opinion, you still have to support the will of council. And I, I think that's the, the key thing for me, is, is that we're always conscious of not speaking for the body before a decision and then respecting the body after. And, and that keeps things above board.
And, and one thing to be conscious of though is bylaw at first and second reading before a public hearing of not expressing an opinion that, where you have closed your mind and are not open to having your mind or your opinion changed by the public at the hearing. So you can have an opinion, absolutely, because an open mind is not an empty mind. You can have an opinion, but you have to be open to having your opinion changed one way or the other by the submissions that are made at the hearing. So just to be very, very, very conscious of that if it happens to be about a development application.
Okay, but, one second, cut. We're, sorry, we've run way over with, with this one, we're, we're past three. Do I have to do anything in regards to the special? We can just start?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, that's, sorry, councillor Pegg.
I just want to clarify that email, thinking about the letterhead in terms of the domain. So it's, I'm assuming for either a physical letter with letterhead or an email, it's not sufficient to say, yes, I'm a councillor, these are my personal thoughts. We just, in addition to that, we can't use letterhead, we can't use district domain email account. Has to be personal email and the disclaimer that this is my personal.
It depends what you're talking about, I think. You know, if, if somebody, if you're communicating with somebody, say, say you've had a really great idea about something and you want to explore it further with maybe somebody who does that kind of thing, and you shoot them an email on your district email account, that's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. But if you say, if you purport that this is official stance of the District of Squamish and that from now on, we are only going to bodge blue cars, and so this is the thing, and yet the rest of council hasn't weighed in on that, that's not okay. But if you're sort of saying, hey, you know, I want to sort of, I'm, I'm thinking of exploring blue cars, what, what does your company offer? Or, or what is the current legislation around that? Or whoever did you talk to? That's, that's okay. Because then it might help you develop something that you want to bring forward to council for consideration.
Councillor Pegg.
So can I test another scenario? So, you know, say I want to write an email to Wood Fiber, I've had some conversations with them, want to provide some feedback, their my personal opinions, but it's sort of stuff I've been interacting with them in my role as a councillor. What email do I use? How do I articulate that appropriately? Because it's not council's positions. It's sort of, you know, what I'm hearing from my constituents and some of those things that I would like to share with them.
I think that might be dangerous, but-
Mary, go ahead.
In those scenarios, Wood Fiber is not reaching out to him because he's Chris Patton Gill's citizen, they're reaching out to him because they're trying to understand the opinion of individual councillors that as a body will make decisions. And so you respond from your district email and you say, I don't know how everybody else feels about this, but here's how I feel about this. Because that's why they're asking, you can't divorce, and so this is the thing, is that you say to us all the time, you can't divorce your title from you, ever.
But let's see.
Except that sometimes you have to, if you sign a petition or you want to, you know, except, except. But you also have to remember that people are engaging you because you wear this hat, because you sit at this table. And you can't shy away from responding. The key thing, I think, that, that staff are trying to convey with this policy is that you can't represent the other six people. You have to represent yourself and your colleagues. And I think you stay on the right side of that and all the other legislation that says you've got to keep an open mind before a bylaw, public hearing. Like, it's, I, to me, the tricky part is like hosting an event. Can I co-host a conversation in the community with Jenna about women in leadership? And can the mayor of Squamish and councillor Stoner host an event about women in leadership? Like, I want to do that. And, and we want to do it because of the titles we wear. So, do, do we get the endorsement of council to do that?
That's, that's what's happened in the past. Absolutely, we actually had that, the exact scenario, the exact scenario. And it was over at the 50th.
Yeah, so I think, like, to me, that's where I want clarity, is where, you know, John can host an event on tiny homes and we can host an event on, you know, whatever. Councillor Anderson could host an event on heritage and its relationship to municipal governments. I mean, why not? But I think it has to come to this table first. And as a body, we say, that sounds like it would give us some information that we need. And please just represent your own thoughts while you're there. Got it?
I, I like the focus on the, on the, the written correspondence that is clearly asking for an endorsement or, or representing that it's an opinion of the whole and like, you know, managing that as well as the planned and promoted appearances whenever, whenever possible with, so I like, I do like that concept. And where we seem to get confused and bogged down is in the, in, in the part that is very nuanced and we can handle with our language, we can handle with, and we are tasked with doing that at the moment, we're on a break even out of the lobby. So, so I'm, I'm okay with letting that, sort of the code of conduct, I think, frames that in without getting too prescriptive. But the, the planned events and the pre, the difference between a pre-vote discussion and opinion sort of expressing and/or gathering mission and the post-vote. And I suppose the gray area in between where public hearing and, you know, some work in that, in that zone is important. Well, it's not-
It's not great.
No, it's not great, but it's, it's between the, it's between the, the beginning and the end. It's that other, that other piece is, is important to define as well. So, and then I, I don't think we need to get too far into it because there's always another scenario. As much as I'd like to hear Ms. Arthur's come up with more blue cars and daffodil, what other example, how many more examples you had for us to run through? But is that, does that sort of-
I think it gives us some stuff. And, and we're not, the other thing to remember is we're not inventing a wheel right now. So I know there are some other examples out there. I did a search today and on Friday, so I do know there's some other examples that we can draw from and see if it's a work council wants to be.
Does that feel like we got far enough for council, any objections to? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're 10 minutes past the start of our special and I can see the cast of characters starting to gather for our next, for our next meeting. I believe we need to start that meeting before 3:30. It's 10 after now. Should we try to get back to these, further work on the resolutions or take a break and re, how long do we need? Do we need to tear the room down to do that?
No, we'll leave the meeting.
Oh, okay.
We can just end it around the table.
We're just going to do the special at the table? Oh, okay. That's great.
Well, do you want, do you want the policy to be able to just put your table down?
We have to stick here. Okay, so I've just been informed that we need to stay at the table because our minute ticker position is currently being worked on by our expert.
Okay.
So, so we're going to leave, should we take, I didn't get the consensus, there's fact gathering. Do we want to go back to resolutions now? Or, or should we just take a 10-minute break and, 10-minute break and move on to a special and we'll bring back- And we'll bring back the resolutions that we didn't get to. We'll find some time next week.
Did you want to open the special at this time?
I think I need to motion terminate this one.
Are you recessing or are you not like that?
Oh, sorry, I'm at a recess, actually, but I think what we need to do is terminate this one, and then we'll start the next one. Okay, Mayor Halle, second by councillor Stoner, all those in favor? And we're done, thank you very much.
Can I open the special, please? I'd like to open the special meeting Tuesday, February 25th. A hot spotlight, please, to Scott Homish, Owea Mayo. May have a motion to adopt the open agenda, moved by councillor French, seconded by councillor Stoner. All those in favor, close, motion carries, motion to close. Moved by councillor Stoner. No, oh, no, sorry. Motion to recess.
During the motion.
During the motion.
Recession.
We're in recess.